Isaiah, you can hear us, correct?
Yes, I can hear you.
President Matthews, we want to get started.
I heard him just a minute ago. I'm just not, I'm not sure what happened after that. He did say good evening, though.
Hello?
There he is.
There you go.
There he is.
Yeah, sorry about that, technical difficulties. Um, good evening, everyone. How are, how are you guys?
Good.
Good, I couldn't hear anything. Ready to roll?
Excellent.
It's up for eight.
All right, so good evening, everyone. Um, we can just, I guess, be formal and promote the call, the January twenty ninth, twenty twenty fourth Strategic Plan Board Workshop.
So moved, Kathy Thompson.
Good second, Jason Casper.
All right. Time is six oh three, I have.
Okay.
So we are good to go. Wanted to take this opportunity to welcome, we do have members from the public who are joining us this evening as well. Uh, so thank you. This will be a participatory kind of presentation, so members of the public will have the opportunity to be engaged as well. So we're here this evening again at the board request to um, do two things. At the last meeting, the vote on what was presented around the strategic plan drafts of the priorities, objectives and goals, along with division and mission, which was the, the kind of the impetus that was going to allow us to go into action planning, was tabled because the board felt they needed additional engagement. Um, wanted to also solicit additional community input, um, so we did put, you know, an open link um, on the, the website. I received thirty eight uh, additional uh, comments in addition to what we had already previously done as a district, um, as you know, which was the Strategic Diagnostic Survey, um, which had two hundred and eight participants, and that was in two phases. It ran from May of twenty twenty two through O- October twenty twenty two, twenty twenty two, which is phase one. And then phase two was administered July of twenty twenty two through October, so through that May to October window. There were two hundred and eight participants that engaged in that portion of the survey. And then, again, in working with the board, um, in the community, we released the fall survey, um, where we had seven hundred and seventy four, um, participants or stakeholders, uh, give input um, to that particular survey, um, again outlining. I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm getting that text from President Matthews, if Ms. Stevens can respond to it. Again, a strategic planning benchmark analysis, which really took all of our academic and educator metrics around student performance, um, staffing, retention, various things, um, went into that. We did the equity scorecard, and again, these are analyses that Hanover conducted for us. Um, we did the learning loss projection, which was really looking at the analysis to assess the extent of potential learning loss through the pandemic. Um, we did a middle school CTE or Career Technical Education Benchmark Analysis, which really helped us look at um, extending our career technical education programs, uh, through the middle grade levels, as we know and as we discussed. Part of our challenge with a lot of our CTE programming, or the goal for us is to really have students graduate, having not only maybe completing their CTE career pathway, but also having some level of a certification, a badge or credential, um, something that obviously makes them marketable not only for college, but more importantly for those who choose to go straight into career. Um, and that was an update on the labor market analysis, which really looked at an analysis of high demand jobs and career clusters, not only in the county, um, but the state of Delaware as well as the region. And that really kind of looked at districts within Delaware, like size of districts, and then, um, I want to say from Camden, New Jersey, south of us, in terms of what are those high demand um, jobs, and then, you know, through various avenues and things that we have, superintendent student advisory council, village level, uh, district level committees and such, uh, where we continue to garner and gather inputs. Next slide. And so.
Doctor Green, this is Jose. I, I just want to interject here. So I'm getting messages from North Star PTA. They're saying that there's a link on the public notices section of our website, and I just double checked, and there is a link on the public notices section of our website. If you go onto our public notices section, there is a link that's live there. I think that's what's creating the issue. Because the only link that I circulated with the board, then I've received communications from a couple that they may not be able to make it in person. But it was, that was to, that was a communication set about a half hour ago, only to the board. But on our public notices section, there's a link, it says Zoom meeting here. So is that, so I don't know. I mean, receiving messages, should I tell them, are we recording it and posting it, or are we going to abide by that? I don't know how to proceed here.
Where's it at? Under public notices.
So North Star PTAs, apparently they've reviewed.
That's a previous link, um, but I think if people are trying to join.
It doesn't work.
It's, it's a broken link that's on that website, but if people are trying to join, see. Upload this currently.
To the website to upload.
This never happens.
Take a pause.
What'd you say?
Doesn't happen when people show up in person.
Right.
You know, I'm a cyber principal, so no different.
Needs that much, you'll find a way to get here.
Yes. I'd like to see how many people.
It's a broken link, that link is not even, previous link that was up, dude.
I see, I like the system. I know, but it's a surprise to you. I know it says that, said that for me, too.
It does have it noticed. With the Zoom meeting, so that is.
Of course.
It says connecting.
I know, but it just keeps ringing. It just keeps rolling.
Yeah, mine's rolling, so now I'm connecting.
You're connecting?
Yes. Let me in.
This is how, Ms. Reyno, so are you communicating with?
Yeah, they're saying, um.
Are they?
Just, it's in the waiting. Oh, that's in.
Okay, we're good.
Okay.
It's quiet, it's enough to be drawn here.
We're good, yeah. I could, if you need help, I come over.
Disregard for us, thank you. All right. So good evening, everyone. Now that we have members from, additional members from the public joining us, I will backtrack slightly. Um, just to give those who just joined us an update. We opened the meeting this evening.
We have to get a new doorbell.
We do it.
Sounds like a fire alarm.
Which is, is going to give me a nervous tick. Just kind of covered, uh, the, the, the data and research, um, and input that we received from uh, various analyses and our partners from Hanover Institute, Hanover Research, covered our community engagement survey, um, that was in the fall, as well as our strategic priorities diagnostic, covered our benchmark analysis, um, which was an academic and educator metrics, uh, to inform, you know, the plan development and really looking at areas to kind of get us to the point. Um, there was also a community, um, not only just a community engagement survey, but a analysis of community engagement strategies, that Hanover conducted with us as well, um, again, and various other reports. Working with the new teacher, uh, project, who also did, as the board members may be familiar with, was the opportunity mobility analysis that really looked at students with disabilities, looked at multilingual learners, looked at students who came from low income backgrounds, just in terms of achievement gap. Um, so these were a lot of analyses and things that went into us really discussing and looking at, um, the idea of priorities. So what we have this evening, um, and again, we did extend the opportunity and got an additional thirty eight uh, other inputs. Much of what folks generally responded to is they wanted to get right into the action and program, where this particular um, request of the board was really to look at our strategic priorities, and so as a, as a team, um, we really kind of landed on three broad strategic priorities, which are student success, uh, family engagement and strategic partnerships, um, resources and operations. And so what you'll have this evening is each of our, uh, district level staff member walk, walking the board through a lot of the analysis and process, it will be opportunities for stakeholders who came this evening to be able to, you know, enjoy, engage and join. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Snyder, um, who is, uh, oversees our accountability and assessment office. Um, just to kind of, again, give everyone the ability, so if you brought your phone, please get ready to bring your phone forwards to be able to capture feedback, because we do want one here to participate.
Absolutely. Every session that we do, when we, uh, work with to get feedback about this plan, we want to gather that in a very similar way. So we're going to give you an opportunity to engage with these questions, and I don't want you to log into this and answer all these questions right now. This pamphlet is for you when you have questions throughout the entire presentation to be able to put them in here. Could we click on the pamphlet link, Dr. Vaughn, just to show them what that looks like?
Do you have actual link for the computers? Or is it?
This is in-person participatory, just.
There it is.
Yes, like that's the link right there, and then there's the QR code, if you want to use that, either way.
I don't want to use my phone.
Absolutely. If we open that, it should open it up in a separate window right there, Dr. Vaughn, is correct. Um, it's probably related to your Zoom screen. Yes, we can see it, but you're going to have to go to share screen and share that screen through the Zoom, and then it will pop up.
Go back to Zoom.
Yeah, if you click on Z M there, that probably now will be the window. Theoretically.
It's two screens.
So it's two screens, so you got to drag them.
Perfect, okay, so maximize that. Perfect, all right, so we're looking here, a pamphlet really is a, is kind of a physical program that uses a post-it note-like feature for you, for you to be able to put post-it notes under each one of these uh, questions. And we want to, we want you to consider these types of questions about each kind of priorities, each one of the goals, everything that you see today. And the reason that we want to ask these types of, we worked with T N T P and with Hanover to talk about good question design, and came up with these as a great way to capture feedback from all of our stakeholders. So when we've met with principals, or with groups of teachers, or with groups of parents through this process, we've tried to use a very similar format so that later on, when I do data analysis with Hanover, we're putting the questions for what reactions do you have, we can pull all those from different sessions and come up with hopefully what we see as a pattern of response. That's going to give us the best feedback, create a program, a degree A plan that's going to reflect what everybody's feedback was over these sessions.
And if I'm not mistaken, did we use pamphlet for the board retreat workshop?
It was a great chance for us to learn. So it's really, it really is very easy, you simply click on the plus, and it's going to open up a little box down here in the corner, and then in that you can type in whatever feedback you have for us in each section.
Can you go back to the QR code?
Absolutely, you can add it back to the, well, I, I hope so. Perfect, right there.
I just needed the link.
If you have the slide deck in front of you, the link is in it, and if you don't, the QR code can take you to it. Um, most of your devices, even your computer, most of them have cameras as well.
Can everyone, everyone able to access?
I love QR codes, sorry, it's like, put them on everything. All right, so that's for me. Presentation for the day, um, we just try to use that as a place to capture some of your thoughts, so that way we don't forget them through this process. If you're in the process, too, you're like, talent's not my jam, you want to write them down, I can enter them for you later. Uh, but this is the process, we want to try and keep organized this, because we're having many, many sessions. We want to capture all the feedback that came. Now, Dr. Vaughn.
No, I'm sure Sean Snyder will be much more savvy on the computer than I was. So, um, I'm going to introduce priority one, student success. If you all have a copy of the strategic plan in front of you, this is actually our very first priority. This is where we butter our bread as a school district. So with me on this team, we have, uh, Dr. Erin Acquisto, who's going to be speaking a little bit to early literacy in a second. She is our Director of Elementary Schools. We have Mr. Mark Pruitt, who will be speaking to, uh, secondary CTE programming. And we also have Dr. Sarah Celestin, who will be speaking to systems of support and intervention. So as you'll hear from us, um, we are going to be just walking you through the rationale, um, and also the goal. So this piece of the goal, like I said, is where we butter our bread. So if you look at goal one, just to kind of synthesize uh, some of the reasoning why this is here, this is our accountability measure. So if you all follow like the D S S F, which is how the state reports our progress towards.
And just be mindful that not everyone understands edge of speech. So we have to spell it out, which is the Delaware School Success Framework, the S S F.
The Delaware School Success Framework. So this is how all of our schools across the state are measured, uh, building to building, district to district. So this is really our state accountability system. When you look at goal one, we're looking at a focus on equity and inclusivity.
Can't see it.
Yes, yes.
On Zoom, they can't see this.
So now you need to share that screen instead of having.
I was doing too much driving left and right. So when you look at the language under goal one, and you see increasing the percentage of students meeting or exceeding state assessment expectations, that is a given, that is a standard, that is where we live. But for us, we really want to take a look at our subgroups with a focus on equity and inclusivity. Because many of our student groups are consistently underrepresented in many successes and outcomes, and we recognize that. And that is something that we have in as a goal. Looking at our walkthrough data, we want to make sure we have a lens on the use of on-grade level material and on-paced instruction. Because we know that our outputs are what are, we get the outputs from the inputs that we put into our systems. And then if you've heard anything over the last couple of years coming out of red clay, you've heard about the push for culturally responsive pedagogy and culturally representative curriculum. So we have a focus on coaching as well as learning for our staff, uh, across the school district. So although it tends to mirror the state, when you look at our data, and for the board, we do have a curriculum and student achievement, uh, session coming up, uh, shortly, February twentieth, we will be digging more into our district data. We carry really a lion's share of the weight for the state, because we're the largest school district in the state. So essentially, when our scores are good, the state's scores are good. We're eleven point five percent of the total. And although our proficiency isn't at pre-pandemic levels, between twenty one and twenty three, we did see a slight bump in our student, uh, in our S B A, our smarter balance assessment data, even though E L A remained pretty flat. So these are things that we're looking at, and the reason why goal one is so important for us. So this is proficiency. But also, we're all educators, and our main product is kids. So when we look at goal two, goal two is really where students get to tell their story. So when we're looking at students demonstrating at least a year of growth, year over year, on district-approved, uh, diagnostic growth measures, that's, if our kids are one or two levels of proficiency behind, how can they tell their story of growth towards proficiency? This is humanizing our experiences in our buildings. So when we look at this, we look at what actions we have in place to address this need, things like data review cycles. And then in a minute, when we get to, uh, Dr. Celestin's area, you'll hear about our work and our conversation around integration of academic and S E B interventions and systems. And teaching and learning and student services and all of our departments will work, be working collaborative, collaboratively towards those goals. So that is just some of the rationale behind student growth towards equitable outcomes. This is where we butter our bread. This is what we do from day to day. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Doc, I'm sorry, Doctor Green.
And before we actually transition, because again, based on some of the comments and, and questions, folks were generally understanding, why aren't they seeing that now? Right, why aren't they seeing, um, the action portion of this? And again, the whole purpose was for the board to look at the priorities, the objectives and the goals. And then what we call the key performance indicators, you know, through the Delaware School Success Framework, such as our smarter balance assessment data, we know, um, attend, attendance, we know graduation rates. All of those things are kind of the given. Part of what we're now looking at is what are those formative assessments through the action planning that would come, working with our, um, various district councils, really looking at formative assessments. One of the things that we recently uncovered, uh, used to be the apple test, now it's the stamp assessments. How do those things factor in, um, to the action plan portion of this, which is again, a layer behind or under what you kind of have before you, but part of this, and again, reaching these goals was really taking a, a lot of the research, a lot of the previous input that was done. Um, so for example, under student learning and outcomes, there, there were six areas, which looked at student learning and outcome, student support, school climate and culture. So all of those discipline data, all of those things will be layered, key performance indicators that would come at a later date as we continue to work through processes to determine, are we consistently measuring not only proficiency, but growth over time, and growth is everything from chronic absenteeism, you know, um, graduation rates and those various things, and when we look at our assessments such as eye readiness, how are students progressing from beginning of the year to end of the year assessment. So again, just for context, because a lot of the feedback that we had is, well, we don't see that. Part of that, too, is really looking at how we're looking at those alignment of those assessments across the board, but they're all aligned to those goals.
Thank you. And you're going to hear more of that, hopefully.
So, and, good evening, everybody. Um, so still within our student success priority, um, we're going to go to objective two, which is early literacy. So as Dr. Bond said, we just talked about student growth. So if we think about, well, how are we going to grow students, we have to start with our youngest learners. Um, and we, we realize that literacy is the foundation for everything else that comes along in life. Um, and we know that what the research says, if, if students aren't reading by the end of third grade, uh, they tend to struggle in school, and, and which will result in higher dropout rates once we get to high school. So we really have to start with our youngest learners, um, and that's, that's at pre-K, um, through our elementary age students. Um, and if we look at goal one, we talked about evidence-based standards-aligned curriculum, excuse me, um, ensuring, uh, students are, it's with fidelity and ensuring access for all, uh, learners. And then goal two, uh, increasing the percentage of students meeting the reading foundational skill benchmarks in grades pre-K to three, with a focus on progress amongst all student subgroups. Um, and, and we are also aligned and, and kind of validating our work, um, with what has been passed, um, in our Delaware, um, in Houseville three oh four, uh, which is that, uh, the department says that everybody should be using a universal screener three times a year to identify potential deficiencies, including dyslexia, and allow for early intervention. Um, so we do have that in place, and we're looking to strengthen and grow that. Uh, we use Acadian's reading in, in uh, grades K and one, and I'm writing in two and five. Um, in our preschool classrooms, uses the teaching gold strategies, which is, uh, done every quarter. Um, and then also Senate Bill Four, which was what the department had said, um, that they're going to publish a list of evidence-based reading instruction uh, for grades kindergarten through three, and each curriculum must align with essential components of literacy, which is essentially the science of reading. And, um, and we actually started that work last year, so we're still kind of just, you know, getting started with it. Uh, but last year, our K to three teachers, um, have started with twelve hours of professional learning around all of the science of reading, and those five, uh, literacy components are phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary and instruction. And, um, and we've highlighted a couple phonics programs last year in our, uh, K to three classrooms across, uh, almost all of our elementary schools. And this year, we're implementing those programs. Um, so we, we just are starting with this, but we really want to focus and, and we think it's so important that we made it an objective within student success. Uh, because if we can get it right with our earliest learners, it's just going to set them up for success as they continue, uh, into middle school, high school and beyond. Um, and, um, and this year, um, our fourth and fifth grade teachers are going through the science of reading training. Um, so we have extended that up to fifth grade, and we also have some of our fourth and fifth grade teachers piloting a phonics program this year. Um, so we've, we've started this work, but again, it's still so important to us that we want to make it a priority um, in an objective, you know, in our strategic plan for the next five years. Uh, and I have to, I can't steal this quote, but, uh, from Kelly Harkins, our E L A supervisor. Uh, she said, structured literacy is harmful to no one, helpful for everyone and necessary for some. So I think that's just really important as to why this work is so important and that, and we need it as a main focus in our plan.
Good evening. Uh, the third objective, uh, under student success is equitable college and career program for all secondary schools. Uh, we want all of our high schoolers to graduate, those who have been through our K twelve system, either ready for college or ready for a career, have the skills, or in many cases, ready for both. Uh, goal one revolves around college readiness. Red clay will increase the number of high school students participating in college-level coursework, ensuring access for all students regardless of background. All right, a key to this is creating a, a level of expectation in all of our schools that we have this opportunity. This opportunity exists for college and career in all of our schools. Uh, some of the data that we'll look at when measuring this is, uh, the number of students taking college-level courses, advanced placement, they, uh, advanced placement courses, I V courses and dual enrollment courses. The, uh, number of students passing those courses, three or better on A P, or better on I B, a B or better on a dual enrollment course. Of course, we can disaggregate that data by school and by demographic subgroup. Uh, some of the action steps that, that we have started to look, uh, create here around goal one uh, is a red clay commitment or a red clay promise that each school will have a core six of A P courses uh, that will be offered every year. Uh, that each school will have a culminating college program uh, at their site, two will be, uh, we've just started with the E C A program, uh, which we're going to roll out over the next five years, the Early College Academy at the Kane and A I. Uh, we're bringing our first group next year of ninth graders, the expansion of the I V program at Dickinson, and the expansion of the A P Capstone Program at, uh, Cap Callaway and, um, Conrad.
Mr. Pruitt, and before you go on, I think it's, it's worth noting to, to the board as well, that, that idea of the core six in terms of equity around A P offerings also came out of, out of conversations with our students. So Mr. Pruitt and I met with the Superintendent Student Advisory Council, and one of the things that was interesting hearing from them was the fact that they also knew the inequity around where certain A P courses were being offered across the district, so us realizing going into this new strategic plan effort that, and then equity around those core sixes are, will, will be important across all of our secondary schools to ensure that students, in essence, aren't necessarily making the choice, or feeling like they have to make a choice where they may want an A P offering, but it's not at a particular school, but they want to go to school for a pathway. So really think through where those equity points lie, but it was, it was definitely, I think, good information and feedback to get from our student representatives, and then also for them to see where there were some inequities across schools based on the number of A P offerings, because I think total right now is but with twenty-three A P offerings or so across the district, give or take.
Probably a few more than that.
Yeah.
But it varies greatly.
It, it varies, and so really understanding that that core across from an equity lens is, is, is very important, but that was input that we also received from student leaders.
You know, what that might look like, a red clay commitment to all of our high schoolers. You know, four, six A P courses offered every year at every school. Or four dual enrollment courses offered every year at every school. A culminating program offered every year at every school, and a core four C T E pathways offered every year at every school. That's got, that's the work we're looking to get into over the next five years. Uh, we're looking to change our master schedule, master schedules and master schedule processes to prioritize college programming and career programming, uh, looking to create a district teacher council on college work, uh, on college coursework so that we can ensure equity and consistency and instructional practices, attitude-driven recruiting of students into these courses, support for students. Supports for students within these courses, be it dual enrollment, AP or IB. Listening sessions from our students who take these courses. How did you get in here? Why are you taking these courses? More importantly, listening sessions to our students who are not in these courses. Why did you choose or why did you not end up in these courses? And why can't you challenge yourself the following year? Looking to reboot an annual college fair and also expand college readiness and pre AP coursework. Not only ninth grade and 10th grade, but in seventh and eighth grade as students prepare for our high schools. The second goal, red clay will increase the number of graduates who are prepared for future workforce opportunities. Ensuring fairness for all students. Key performance indicators, measures that we're, you know, that we're looking to use over the next five years would be work-based learning credits. The number of students earning work-based or co-op credits within their CTE pathway. The number of pathways and the number of industry credentials, Dr. Green spoke to this. The number of students leaving our schools with an industry credential, a CNA, a phlebotomist tech. A para certification in education, a computer technician. The number of concentrators, those complete completers, the numbers completing a three-year CTE-approved career study. Action steps will include examine the four, four pathways at each of our attended zone high school. Building CTE programming at our middle schools that vertically aligns with our high school programming. The creation of CTE programming at Cab Calloway School of the Arts. Okay, the having those those career skills, the business of entertainment. And getting a getting hitting those courses certified in career and technical education. We're looking to, we've already started some of this work at eighth grade year that allows students. In our eighth grade to access our high schools in the fall. To make an informed decision on where they would like, which of our high schools they'd like to attend. Starting off with what their feeder pattern has the school, attended zone school has to offer. And then on the back end in the spring, getting them out to the school of their choice. So they can make informed decisions about using our new Naviance platform for two things, to make. Set their first goals towards graduation and make an informed decision on their. Or selections for ninth grade, including their spare. The final goal, red clay will develop and promote the skills of all students in alignment with red clay's portrait of a graduate. Portrait, the portrait of a graduate was finished to a large degree about a year and a half ago. As we started this work on the strategic plan, we knew we would initiate it or re-initiate it, market it. As we, as we get started on our next five years strategic plan, ensuring reasonable skill development for all. The goals encompass, this actually goal encompasses K-12 and is not unique to just high schools. And includes already established portrait of a graduate domains. Commitment to people, collaboration and empathy, multi-level communication, writing, speaking, listening. My apologies.
Turning your cell phone off.
Turn your cell phone off. All I did was stop that. A passion for learning, critical thinking, taking initiative and an entrepreneurial spirit, persistence and global awareness. And others, just a couple of examples. This, the work, a lot of this work was already done with a teacher committee. That talks about the academic goals with being a graduate of red clay schools, including being college-ready on the SAT math. How 530 college on English reading and writing, 480, up score of 480 or better. Having a C or better in pre-calculus or statistics upon graduation, three years of a world language. Being involved in one or more extracurricular activity, very important. Action steps include promoting and marketing of this, right? Getting this out, we've got this, we've set it aside, we're now ready to launch it. Starting in August of 2024. To utilize a previously established crosswalk, the work done with these skills within our already existing curriculum. We're looking at actions that increase digitally literate citizens. We're looking to expand extra, we've done a lot of work the past year. How many of our students in this district at the secondary level are involved in at least one or more extracurricular activities? We have that baseline data, that data is very important moving forward over the next five years. We're looking to create handbooks for activities and athletics. And then of course, we have a couple of things that cut across all three of these goals, and I think none more important. Than our need to analyze enrollment, programming and resource allocations, how those three are interconnected. And how they impact the equity across all of our secondary schools, middle schools, high schools.
And so, thank you, Mr. Pruitt. And I, and I, and I, looking at. The first goals or the goals thus far, and really understanding going back to Dr. Castro's. How we looked at early literacy at one point two being kind of the foundation. We know that there are gate openers, as I like to call them, and that in essence that if. A student at eighth grade does not take algebra one by eighth grade, the chances of them going on to high school. Taken in the the AP offerings that we have. Is a challenge. So how do we look at almost backward mapping from that goal of where we want students to be career and or college ready? And how does that work down to our earliest learners when we talk about the foundation and the science of reading? How both feed each other? And then from a programmatic standpoint, ensuring that there's equity across all of our schools. Because we've heard a lot of conversation, a lot of discussion, a lot of concern. Around equity of offering. And we know we just came off the choice window. It's hard to be all things to all people, but if there are foundational things that we offer across all of our schools. That's a part of this. Then we're headed in the right direction. And again, for clarity, I think the other thing too, going through this process that. I'm going to convey to our community and working with Hannah, the traditional. Kind of way of doing strategic planning of just looking at it through the lens of programming. If we've learned anything during COVID, there's a lot of disruptions that disrupt programs. But if we are standards-focused and skill-based, regardless of the programs, our students would be successful. Because the student school, I mean, the skills that Mr. Pruitt just alluded to through the portion of a graduate transferable. And we've heard that through our labor market analysis, just in terms of a lot of our students don't have the ability to work as a team. So how do we really look at team-oriented approaches to be able to get them to galvanize around what we know the labor force of the labor market is demanding? So. Really being standards-driven, skill-based will help us get to that point. And then I'll just let Dr. Sellers to share.
We're still in priority one, student success. But objective four is really looking at systems of support and intervention for our students that may need. A intervention or additional support related to anything, as Dr. Bond said, it can be academic-related, social, emotional, behavioral. Really looking at holistically at what students need. So there's three goals in this section. I'll kind of briefly talk about each goal and then I'm going to kind of dig into how we got here and what we're looking at. So goal one is more of a school-wide climate-related goal. Looking at increasing inclusive practices across environments. So this is looking at. Each school and one of the data metrics that we look at each year is the school climate survey. And so that is that climate survey is taken not just by our students and staff, but by families at all of our schools. And so as we've looked at trends over the last several years. There have been some pieces that have come out and obviously different schools have different strengths and weaknesses in terms of the school climate survey. But some of the pieces that have come out is around looking at inclusive practices across all student groups. So sometimes when we hear that inclusive practices or inclusion, people think about special education for students with disabilities. But we're not limiting it to that. We're thinking about our multilingual learners. We're thinking about our students that come from different socioeconomic backgrounds. Students that do, all students and all families feel welcomed and a part of the school community. And so one of the big things that has come out of several of our school surveys over the years has been around trauma. Students experiencing trauma and do all staff know how to handle that when a student comes in? And we've had certain schools that have done series on trauma-informed practices, but it hasn't been a school-wide initiative. And so one of the things we've been looking at around goal one is number one, how are we going to expand inclusive? Practices through trauma, a trauma-informed list. So trauma-informed training for all of our schools to support our educators and how do I handle if a student has just experienced. Community violence or they just experienced something in the home, how do I handle that when they come into school and maybe are really struggling? Additionally, with the inclusive practices, one of the things we've heard loud and clear from our educators is. We want more strategies and more tools in our toolbox to deal with students that may have different learning challenges. So if I have a student who is reading well below grade level, so Dr. McCastro was mentioning. Hopefully with the tier one phonics programming, the school-wide phonics programming, we're able to see some gains there. But we have students that are really struggling and are well below grade level. Do teachers have the tools necessary? So if I'm a general ed program teacher and I have a student coming in that is reading. Three, four years plus below grade level. Do I know how to support them? Am I, do I feel confident in how to do that? And so that's all kind of under the bucket of goal one inclusive practices. So we're looking at overall climate. How how we support students coming in from any background, including students experiencing trauma. As well as actual instructional practices for students that might be struggling. Okay, goal two digs more into students with the highest level of support need. So this one talks about a continuum of services and support for students with the highest level of need to improve outcomes. So when we talk about highest level of need, I wanted to think about both academic needs and then also social, emotional and behavioral needs. So the academic side, those students that are struggling the most, that might be well below grade level. Maybe they've qualified for special education services, maybe they're in the process of receiving interventions. But do we have a continuum of services to meet their needs and a continuum of evidence-based interventions to meet their needs? So what we've heard loud and clear from our, some of our school data, even looking at our academic growth data. Is schools have said, well, we've tried, we might have tried this intervention. And the student kind of gets stuck and they are not, we're not moving the needle. And so. We feel like we have a repertoire of tools at what we would call tier two, like at the group level, group intervention. But then when the student is not moving, they're not growing, we're not seeing growth in their their academic metrics. What do we go to next? What is the next step? And so for a long time, we've said, well, okay, the next step, we're going to evaluate for special education. But there are many different tools out there, many evidence-based practices that we could be using at a tier three. Level for intervention with students as well as for specially-defined instruction for specialists. So that would be on the academic side. A lot of times on the goal two, on this goal two, students with the highest level need. What's been coming up more often has been looking at our behavioral data. So students that have a very high number of office discipline referrals. Sadly, since COVID, we've seen a high increase in students that are being, going to outside agency placements. So like acute mental health treatment centers like Rodford Behavioral Health, Dover, Dover Behavioral Health Center. As well as students that are having multiple risk assessments for threat assessment or suicidal ideation. Those things are very concerning when we see a pattern of really high needs on the social, emotional or mental health side. We've been very fortunate since we've received the SR funding through COVID to be able to expand our clinical mental health staff and our social worker staff. But as Dr. Amen and I have talked a lot about. How are we going to sustain them with the SR funds leaving? How are we going to sustain the mental health practitioners? And so part of this goal two, there's the academic side of it, and then there's the social, emotional, mental health side of it. With the amount of increasing mental health needs that we're seeing. What, how as a school system can we not only sustain staff? But also look at a continuum of support. So what do emotional support classrooms or therapeutic classrooms look like in the school? If a student needs something beyond that, so I was just meeting with a family last week whose daughter is struggling and they said. We need, she needs a therapeutic placement, but the closest one we can find is three hours away, right? And so looking at how do we as a school community support services in school and then help with community partnerships? To support services for students that might need something outside of school. So that's all part of goal two. It also has a component, one of the pieces we want to dig into is. Our students who are in alternative placements. So you've heard us talk about placements like Positive Change Academy. Yearn or Parkway. Typically, students go to those placements for disciplinary reasons because of certain types of behaviors. However, you know, sometimes there's concerns that when they go to those placements. It kind of becomes like a holding place where they're not making academic progress. And so we've already started the work. Of working with those programs on looking at their program implementation. Making sure that what they're providing for students is helping to move the needle for them academically. And so we want to continue that work to expand and partner with them in that programming. So that's part of goal two. And then goal three, this one is a very, it's a very big goal. It kind of overlaps across many areas. But what this is talking about, what it says successfully implement the multi-tiered system of support framework across all schools. So when we refer to MTSS, we're referring to. A system of interventions and supports for students. So all students are accessing tier one curricula through objectives two and objectives three in their schools. But if they're struggling, whether it's academically or socially and emotionally, they need to be able to access higher level of intervention. And so what the multi-tiered system support framework does. Is it helps schools to be able to not only identify students appropriately using a screening system. But it helps them to be able to intervene really flexibly with students. And so we've been working in this area, our prior strategic plan had a goal around this area. And we did really some good work looking at every kind of. Doing some mapping of where every school in our district is. So we use a measure called the tiered fidelity inventory. Which is a systems measure to look at what components do our schools have in place. And so we know what what our schools have in place and what where our gaps are. And so what we're looking to do here is two pieces. Number one, help the schools fill in the gaps for things that they might be wanting to strengthen. The other piece of this, as Dr. Bond mentioned earlier, is historically with MTSS, academics and social, emotional have kind of been siloed. And people have not looked at them together, although we know from like a whole child approach that. A student who's having behavioral challenges is going to struggle academically. A student who's struggling academically may start to have emotional needs if they feel they're very far behind and affects their self-esteem and things like that. And so what we want to do in this school is not only make sure our our systems are strong in every school. But also look at how can we best integrate? The system. So if I'm a teacher, I'm not having one data review meeting just to look at academics. And then a whole other team is over here looking at the behavioral data. How are we looking at that altogether so we can best intervene for the child? So that's kind of a broad description, but there are, there are a lot of action items under this goal of where we want to go to help continue to build the system out. We've done a lot of good work, I would say, the last five years. COVID slowed us down a little bit, but we've got a lot of foundational elements in place. And now we really want to take it to the next level. So that's. System of support in a nutshell. I could talk about this all night, but I don't know, Dr. Green probably has more.
No, no, and I know, appreciate Dr. Sellers, and as she says, she can go really in-depth with this. So I, I think what would be a good, so it's not a lot of sit and get, I would just say as as a board. And then obviously those who are joining us, if you want to kind of just do a turn and talk. Real briefly, I know you have the padlet where you could put additional information, but just do a brief turn and talk on goal one. What you heard thus far through each of the kind of broad goals, but then the objectives that are underlying the goal. And then we'll give you about five minutes and then we'll bring back and come back to whole group.
And feel free to paddle it from earlier. Do you want to add, those of you that are in public, please feel free to add to the paddling.
While we're in it, so we can ask. It's hard to go back. Is it just these goals that was?
Just goal one.
No, no, I'm talking about the presentation. Did they have more than just the goals?
No, it's pretty much it's a pattern after what was.
In terms of how this work is not the concept.
This last year. Implementing such things to try and get. Test scores up. And I don't know if we did that or not. I'd like to see that.
So this level is a high level. This is not. But I have questions about it. Can I talk to you too, sir?
Let me send you the presentation.
Okay, I have questions about. The structure of the plan. The nuances, because I just wanted to be a. Like it's like everybody works on it, sees the same thing. You have new eyes on it in terms of how these are worded and things like that. I have questions around some of the goals. Just how, what they actually mean. Because it's easy to read, but like if you dig into it, if I have to implement it, if I'm a teacher, I don't know exactly what that looks like. I can give you an example. Okay, so. For example. For example, goal, goal, early literacy objective two, there are two verbs in there for the goal. So is the goal to implement evidence-based standards aligned curriculum or is it to ensure access and support?
Because it has. Sure access and support, but then you have to implement once you give.
That's the strategy. So there's a goal and then there's a strategy and then there's a process and then there's measures. So if you have two, two, it's actually written as goal, is actually has two goals.
Part of the issue that we discussed is it can get heavy laden, which is, you can put a hundred goals in there.
Oh, I called it too many goals.
We could put a hundred goals in there, but ultimately, like if you look at our current plan that was saying that you had goals and you had focus areas, right?
It took many forms. They're saying two goals and one goal is what I'm saying. There's two goals and one goal.
I hear you and what I'm trying to explain to you is by ensuring the access, right? So where it says ensuring access and support for all students. So you're reading right there, early literature, goal one, rec label implement evidence-based standards aligned, align curriculum for all pre-K students with fidelity, ensuring access and support for all students. So, so the, the notion is that we're implementing the standards-based curriculum, ensuring that all students not only get access to it, but also supported as a result of the implementation of that curriculum.
Understand the concept, that's not what I'm talking about. If, if we implement, if the theory of action in the goal, if we implement evidence-based standards-aligned curriculum for all pre-K through five students with fidelity and ensure access and support for all students, then what? Like it's, it's a lot in there. What is the goal? Is the goal to implement or is it goals to ensure access and support or all of the above? Cause it says.
It's all of the above.
So, cause, cause the word you could put there is by, and if you put the word by ensuring access, then you're giving the strategy. And not the goal.
Okay, so just.
That's what I was writing, so that's, that's what I'm saying. I think there's, it's a lot of information in here and I get the concept because I'm an educator, but I also feel like it's the goals and some of the goals and some of, some of the goals include strategies. Some of the goals include measures. So I just want to set be clear about what the actual goals are. Like this one, red clay will expand the continuum of services.
Identify where you're at, just so I can.
A goal to objective four, red clay will expand the continuum with services and support for students with the highest needs. Red clay, you could also write it and there's, there's, there's two words after that. You could also write red clay will ensure improved outcomes. Those are two related for different goals. So the strategy is to expand the continuum of services. The goal is to ensure improved outcomes for students with the highest needs. So the strategy is not, it should be red clay will ensure improved outcomes and support for students, for students with the highest needs. The strategy, when you get into that deeper level of planning, is to expand the continuum of services. And then when you guys get into real weeds, you'll talk about which are those, which are those services that you will use? So that's kind of.
But that's what is forward-facing in terms of a goal, because the action plan and then the detail, and when we look at continuous improvement plans for schools, will actually have the programs, the strategies and implementations.
But I think that the strategic plan should have some measures for us.
Will have some of the measurement, but that was the point of until we, because there are so many things. This is really narrowing down the focus so that it can be a roadmap, because apparently we can be all things to all people.
All I'm saying is if I'm measuring, if I'm measuring the district on this goal, I'm measuring two different things than one goal. That's what I'm saying, and I don't want to do that. I want us to measure one thing in one goal.
But then we're increasing the number of goals that we'd be measuring.
Which one you want.
Could just make note of your, your feedback there.
Because what, the, the expansion of the services is not the goal or is it the goal?
It is a goal.
Okay.
Especially when we see that what we've determined to be the need across the district.
You don't need to put ensuring improved outcomes in objective four, because that is in objective one. You want improved outcomes for everybody. That's already there, that's all I'm saying. I think there's a lot in there.
I got.
You're overworking it.
Just noted.
Okay, I did.
As part of your feedback.
I just don't want the team to feel overwhelmed with all of the jargon in there. Cause if you pull it apart, I think that this is very robust plans. And I, the level of work that's going to have to be put into actualizing it is where.
But then there's specific key performance, there are specific K P I's that will eventually hold us accountable to that goal, which will then determine the work. So we're only going to do what we're able to measure. So every story will have a number behind it and every number will tell a story.
I get that, but as, as the board, when we're looking at this, we're only seeing half the picture because I think the high-level strategy. And maybe it's just the way it's presented, the high-level strategies, I would have liked to see, and if some of them are embedded, but we have our goals, but what are those high-leverage strategies, not specific for every goal, but these things that our district is going to do so that you get these outcomes? And that's what, so I feel like we have half of it, not the whole thing.
Okay. I guess we're open, go ahead.
I thought it was, I liked the fact that it flows. I like the fact that it kind of all flows together, which I've seen something like that, starting from portrait and moving through. And then you've got, Jose and I were talking about this, we've got somewhat of a base at each school, meaning the same offerings, which I think is a very good thing. The thing I don't understand, Darrell, and I'm concerned, I think literacy is critical, I totally get that. But I sometimes think when we focus just on one thing, I know we've got in goal one, you're, you're looking at S B A F and all the other stuff. But when we just focus on literacy, sometimes what happens is the other things kind of fall, become less important. You know, like we, we were focusing on literacy for a long time and I think writing kind of took a little bit of a.
Well, I, I think just as a, and, and our focus is how do you integrate writing? And, and that's again, an action item or a strategy, because you're not an effective reader unless writing is a component of, of reading. The challenge has always been from the state and you can look at it when, and I'm, I'm dating myself, but when we had D S T P, when writing was actually a part of the state assessment, there was a lot more writing.
There was a lot more.
Right, and so we, we realize the intersectionality as a district between reading and writing. But again, ultimately, we can layer a, a, a document plan and make it look good and make it sound good. But ultimately, what are we measuring? And, and, and how do we measure it? How do we institute it? And how do we infuse it into the core curriculum? Again, because to get away from this idea of, we, I, I will say this, we, we've taken an unorthodox process partly because there were, there are so many things.
Yes.
Right, and part of this comes back to a mission, a core vision and a belief. One, that all children are deserving, all children are worthy, all children will receive as a result of being in rec play. And part of the challenge that I think with Dr. Schneesmith was just that we wrestle with around this idea of language, what's forward-facing language, what's internal language? How do we layer it, how do we convey it? In, in, in a, in a way that folks kind of see where we're going as a goal. And then what does the action planning actually look like? So then when, when Mark was sharing just through the analysis, Mr. Porter was sharing through the analysis of really looking at equity. Because we say equity, right? And we can land on equity and be misleading when we just think it's about diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging, when it's actually equity. And you'll look at the third goal, which is resources. Ensuring that when we look at resources and operations, that there's equity in where we're actually drawing. And I think the other underpinning or layer to this that, again, isn't flushed out in what you see here as a board, is all of our schools will then have to transition their comprehensive school improvement plans to align to what we're doing here. So it's a continuous, so when, let's say, and, and I don't want to use Marbrook, but I'll use Marbrook as an example, just in this sense, that when Marbrook is having a conversation with North Star and a conversation with Warner, and those principals are having those dialogues across the table. There are foundational kinds of things, albeit student needs might differ based on data, but the work and the support, because the educator could leave school A, voluntary transfer to school B. At least there's consistency around professional learning, the processes, and even for families. As families receive and have multiple information, this is a good segue here, so I'm, I'm getting there. Receiving communication and information, right? That there are some consistent tenants that are outlined, not only in what we've established as the goal and the priorities and the objectives that are coming from the board. But now we as a leadership are taking that and putting in an implementation and it's flowing down, not just from what we're saying as a district, but what's actually happening in the school.
And so I want to clarify, clarify something for the record. When I'm speaking about the plan, it's not critical of the work that everybody is, no, I'm doing this for the public. So everybody, does everybody, the district knows me, but not everybody else knows me. But what I'm saying is I'm looking at this plan and I'm asked, I'm saying, there's a lot in here. And I understand that the nuance is when we are sharing with the public that come from very different backgrounds, very different understandings of the, the jargon of education. I almost wonder if it's too much the way it's forward-facing for the basic high-level plan. Cause I know there, there's multiple iterations of a strategic plan. But for the, the basic pieces, if I look at, at this document, I should be able to say as a, as a parent, as maybe, at my hu, I'll use my husband for example, because he doesn't get all through the education stuff. If he looks at it, he's educated, but if he looks at it, he's going to say, okay, I know where red clay is going. Red clay is doing one, two, three, four, five, okay? Why, we always, we know the why, the why is improved student access outcomes. You have those values there, they're aligned to the values. So my, my feedback, not criticism, but my feedback is as we go forward with this, if we could clean up the language in some of these goals, because they, they incorporate, they incorporate the, the strategy sometimes. They incorporate the measures and maybe just have like little one-liners about the types of measures, but not maybe the specific measures that will be used so that the public can understand that, but also it can just be clearer.
And so, and I, and I'll just say this for, to, to help with that. Actually, if you look at the objectives, it's really what's the public facing aspect of what we're doing, right? And so if I, if, because part of this in going through was also about language, right? Because most people understand objectives and goals and not what was called ain't like, wh- what we were dealing with, with, with the, the framework that Hanover was giving us. So as, as the public kind of goes through it, they can see, oh, red clay is focused on student growth towards equitable outcomes. They're focused on early literacy, they're focused on equitable career college, college programming for all of our secondary schools. You know, systems of support and intervention. So the objectives is really what is the public facing when we look at it and we talk about effectively communicating with local and greater community, engaging families and community partners in educational process. Like tho- those are the things so that then when they say, and, and the goal is really to drive probably more internal, and we even debated that, right? And so this is a healthy conversation to have, because we even debated whether what we present the goals. But the goals also is a part of an internal accountability for us to not lose sight of what we said we were doing via the objective. So I, I, I wholeheartedly agree with you and we wrestle with the language. So the very thing that you're.
Yeah.
We're doing here is what we went through internally as well, from the goal perspective. And we debated what's public facing, what's not public facing. So when we talk about in fairness of, of transparency, that's what we wrestle with as a team. I mean, we literally were going back and forth in this room around, because language matters, right? But the other thing is too, we don't want to water it down to the point that we say we're doing all these things, in essence, we don't have the metrics that are aligned to it, because it's easy to get lost and things change. And I, and, and to Dr. N. Castro's point, legislation gets infused in things. And so how do we have a flexible enough plan? So that when a next piece of legislation comes down around early literacy or curriculum, our objectives are clear enough that one, it becomes a barometer of where do we put it? How do we implement it? Or no one anticipated a pandemic. And a lot got disrupted in a pandemic and a lot of what we had in our current, now sunsetting plan, we can no longer do. And so those are some of the things, but the, the very thing that we just did is what we, we wrestled with as a team.
And I think so, and I'll be quiet after this, but I think, I think that some of, some of the objectives have a goal written, but that goal written is actually the strategy for that objective. And in some of the objectives, they have both, and that's, that's all I'm saying. So like where, where Hugh's about to present, I'm looking at his, one of the objectives. The goal is actually the strategy. So that's kind of, so I think, I'm thinking of high-level objectives, strategy type of measure. That's it.
And that, and we, we, we're on the same page. But we're just, I'm, again, at full transparency, we felt.
Wanted to give us more.
We wanted to give you more too, because again, as a team, we literally wrestled with where to put it. And I was just thinking about like Dr. Selison's office that kind of crosses a broad spectrum. When we talked about multi-tiered systems of support, when we talked about student support, like where does it fall? Sometimes it doesn't fall in that clean space, so you know, point noted, and I, I appreciate you raising the issue.
All right, the next one is, is family engagement and strategic partnerships. A lot of that is how we communicate what's happening in goal one. And I feel like a lot of our goals were just described in the struggle that we're having here about the clarity of the plan for our community, for our staff, et cetera. And also one of the early padlet entries talked about who was actually giving in the input into this plan. So we need to make sure we're giving out that information. Like we've had the surveys for the community, surveys for the staff. We've met with our C P A, we've met with our principals, we're here in this workshop. So we're trying to broaden that so that we're effectively communicating with our community, what we're doing in this strategic plan. Then also down to a, a lower level, what we're doing with our parents and guardians and their participation at the school level and the district level with decision-making. So that's helping parents understand what grade level expectations are, involving them in the student performance, including academics and discipline within the district. Engaging them in a, in a real meaningful way in the educational process. We need communicating our equity goals and the outcomes of those surveys and helping us in participating into the evaluation of those surveys. It's also education for our families and safe and secure technology practices. That seems to be ever-evolving, A I is just one example. It's a constant thing every day, but how are we going to communicate that with our families? How are we going to embed that into our learning? How are we going to assist our staff in doing that? The second goal is making sure we do that in a transparent way that's accessible. We're all in the community for the school and district information. We're currently in the process of updating our website, making sure we're communicating in languages that are available to all of our diverse community. It's how are we using our social media resources? We have a minute to remind out this year, how are we utilizing A T V? Is that being a meaningful resource that our parents are able to access or community is able to access? The third goal in this area is strengthening our current and our new strategic partnerships. We have partnerships with Children and Family First, J D G, a number of our local businesses, our local universities. We heard about the Golden Beak Program already. We also have a lot of organizations in our district. We have cultural centers, want to access them for our resources, mentorship and enrichment programs. There's a lot of action steps that will go with this. Once we get everything in goal one ready, we can really target what we want to do, how we want to reach those communities and what resources we're going to use to reach this.
Dr. Hammond. Or Dr. Hammond goes again, just again, for point of clarity, we also do our look at best practices for a community, what we call a determined community engagement. And so that, again, another underpinning that, that kind of helped formulate that broad objective and goal. But we look at best practices across the nation and country in partnership with Hanover to really, when we talk about action planning, really embedding that within not only our district processes, but when schools, school principals work through engaging. And it's not just looking at the P T A R or looking at the active parents. How are we as a district going layers below? Who are the community partners who may have the voice? And that's why it's the strategic partnership piece of it is critical. Because a lot of our children, in terms of when we look at that during school, after school, out of school time, may leave us and go to a new, another community-based agency. So how is that partner agency having the relevant critical information to be able to put in their newsletters to share with parents? So it's just not always one line of communication coming from the district, but then also two-way. How are those community partners able to convey what they're seeing within the community to support the district? And again, over the past year or so, whether that's the, the, the A I task force, you know, a, a, a lot of that, we, we see that a, a lot of good information can come out, but we also want to be able to look at. You know, a a lot of that, we we see that a lot of good information can come out, but we also want to be able to look at collective accountability. When we come through, especially when we talk about grant opportunities, when we talk about partnerships, more importantly. That that work is aligned around the overarching goals and expectation, mission, vision. And objectives of the district. So one of those again, underpinnings, but as an analysis. In partnership with Hanover that really looked at. Best practices for community engagement. And then again, that's also informing the work. So this isn't anything that we're pulling out, we're learning from the lessons, but more importantly, taking best practices. As we move forward. Which then transitions to this point of. Again, March will be five years. There were a lot of existing partners. Within our district who in essence wasn't necessarily helping us generate the outcomes that we would desire. So when we talk about finite resources. How do we really align those resources to ensure that that's the best partner for us? Because there's a lot of solicitations about everyone that has a program. We see it post COVID, everyone had a platform that was going to help with learning loss. How do we really know where we're using spending taxpayer dollars wisely to assure that those resources, the partnerships? Are are being used to to. Keep students at the center of everything we do. And so that would transition us to goal three where. Doctor Hammond will be able to articulate. Or objective three, excuse me.
So the first goal is going to be really super critical when we get to that next step after all this, we get the action steps because as. All the the schools and departments start looking at all the action steps to put these things in place. Many of them take money. So what we need to do.
All of them take money.
More than others.
Whether it's the people who are running it or the program and materials that we're using, in the end, it comes down to they all require a dollar.
Right. And as a board, you're used to seeing our budget in the operating unit structure, right? Where you might see the library budget or the music budget for the performing arts budgets. I don't know, I just think three toilet. But you know, you're used to seeing it that way. And what we're going to try and do is put not try, but what we're going to do as part of this is have a layer that ties those expenditures to these goals. So that we can make sure that we aren't spending money on something just because we've always spent money. We need to be able to say, here's an action step, teaching learning says, here's an action step. To to get through to this goal, it's going to cost X. We need to then remember the next year, go back and say, or two years, depending on how long that project is. And say, did it do it? And we need to be willing to say, you know what? It was a good idea, but it didn't meet that goal to our satisfaction. We're going to do something differently. We're going to change that this year. So. Part part of the strategic plan will be putting processes in place so that. You know, a lot of times people will call and ask me, hey, can I buy this? And and my answer is always, I don't know, can you? Because it's not my call to say whether you can or can't buy something. But what I can do is make sure that we have a process in place so that as a group, we're looking at it and saying, yes, this aligns to the. And we we started to to do this process right before COVID, actually, with the strategic plan grants where. Schools would put in mini grants and say, hey, I want to do this. And the reason I want to do this is it would support goal one or goal two or goal three. And we started that. The next step of that is when it's all done, getting back together and saying. Did it work as we expected? And if it didn't, we need to be willing to either change it. Or drop that activity and pick up a different activity. So that that's that's his first goal there. And the second one here. Next slide there. If I was going to put a picture up here to help with the words, it would be a picture of a silo and a line through it. You always hear about large organizations, you get siloed and this whole goal is talking about making sure that departments communicate. I'll just throw out two examples as as how this should be working. We we sometimes might have a principal that comes up with an amazing idea. That they want to change the start time of their school. So they start talking with parents and they start with teachers and they go through this for months. And then all of a sudden they call Kelly over transportation and say, hey, we're going to change our start time next year. What do you think? And it's too late at that point. So we need to make sure that people, when they start these action steps, are thinking through. Who are the different departments that need to be a part of this? Obviously, if it has to do with start times, busing needs to be a part of it. If it has to do with eating in your class a couple of years ago, there was a decision that students should be able to eat in their classroom for breakfast rather than going to the cafeteria. They went right to the classroom to start their breakfast. They could start working at the same time. Great idea. It didn't get discussed with the custodians till they started wondering why there was all this food in classrooms. They said, we can't do this. I mean, so we can do it, we are doing it. Where we went wrong was not bringing you in on the front end of that so that we could figure out how best to do it. So so that's the second goal is making sure that before we start these action steps. Make sure that we'll say through who are all the different departments that need to be a part of it. Work together to get.
Do all this work, we're going to need continuous improvement to maximize the effectiveness of our workforce. And the first is the data driven professional development. And this is for all staff. Using the information that we have to drive what our employees need. So that could be anywhere from the novice teacher, what's where do we need to meet them in their learning and what we need to do. To an experienced teacher and where they are in this process and what we need to do. It includes our parents who are a significant part of our workforce. And they're working with some of our immediate students if they understand what we need to do. It includes our our bus drivers and bus A's as they're the first to greet our students in the morning. They need to have an understanding what the mission and the vision and objectives of the school system are. Even to our custodians, when I was in high school, the most popular person in our school was the school custodian. And he had a lot to do with the climate culture that was happening in in that building. We also know that it's been some transition in administration over the last couple of years. Our administrators need to know how to implement this plan, how to support the staff that are in their building. And they just be targeted and ongoing as we report. And it goes without saying, these days, the recruitment and retention of our staff. There's a is a big focus that we will have as we are moving along. How we address that and keep high quality employees in red clay and attracted to red clay. From there, we know one of the things that helps with the recruitment and retention is that people feel safe and they feel well. We want to have a focus on the the health and wellness of our students. There would be a health fair two times a year, working with our vendors such as such as Vision to Learn. Department of Public Health for dental, coordinating with our wellness centers. We have a ribbon cutting ceremony next week for one of our most recent ribbons. Wellness centers. We wanted to allow it's tobacco and vaping education. That was a big push before the pandemic. We need to bring that back. That's a serious issue that we see in red clay. We also want to make sure we're paying attention to the our staff wellness program. We have things since as com psych services, those are resources there that address anywhere. And from wellness to someone who's having some personal issues, financial issues, it's a great resource that we want to make sure we're communicating. Body monthly resources as we switch into February, it's heart month. Helping people monitor, making sure they're taking care of themselves. Check your blood pressure, exercise, et cetera. Coordinating that with our wellness committee as we move forward, really focusing on staff. And goal three is is safety. Obviously, we want everyone to come to school feeling safe in the environment that they're learning. There's things such as additional constables, recruitment, training of those. Our district wide communication system, struggle to whether we call this radios or walkie talkies. It's different in each building, but how our staff is able to communicate with one another in a building. Continuing to make sure we're securing our physical spaces. Securing our entrances of an additional camera, vehicle tag rack readers, upgrades in all of our schools.
Do you mind if I just look at the wellness plan? So just related to goals one and two, you might remember the board approved about two summers ago, so summer of twenty twenty two, we approved the federal wellness plan. That's across department work between nutrition, public safety, nursing, student services, HR, there's several departments involved in that. And so goals one and two are connected with some of our key goals and metrics in our federal wellness plan. That's a law, that's a five to 10 year plan. So we created. Five year goals and then we created even further goals out. So. Part of goal one and two here are connected with the wellness plan that the board had approved about a year and a half ago. And it also connects, I know several of you sit on the district wellness committee and work with our wellness champions. So. Goals one and two are connected directly in with that. And then goal three, as as Dr. Vermo mentioned, it's about physical. Safety, but it also includes psychological safety at school. So I know we've had a couple of board members that have sat on our district. Safety and crisis response committee. And so that goal three is directly related to the work of that group. So we're looking at everything from physical building security. Emergency preparedness plans, our tabletop drills that we do with schools. One of our goals this year is expanding our tabletop drills. And then the other part of goal three is a psychological safety that has to do with crisis response and deployment when there is a community based. Challenge or a school, you know, sadly, a staff or student that. Need deploy out for that as well. That also includes risk assessments and how we make sure that students. And staff are safe in the building. So I just wanted them put connect the dots to that because. A lot of this, we started a year and a half ago through our wellness plan work, but it that that is a. A pretty long term plan that we're working through and we wanted it to be connected in with the the strategic plan.
Next is the reminder about your padlet feedback that we hope to receive from anybody, everyone. Our next steps as a district, before I turn it back over to Dr. Greens. Is we're going to make sure we are able to synthesize the feedback from all of the many resource points that we've had. Looking for any trends that we see, make any adjustments that that are necessary. Hopefully, we're able to get the the board to approve the priorities, objectives and goals as we go through that process. And then our our work of the the district is to finalize our key indicators, action steps, and then go live with the strategic plan, hopefully ready to roll for the the start of the next school.
Thank you. I have some thoughts at the end, so I don't know what you're the next steps is for the conversation we have up for the board.
Share your thoughts.
So I was reading some of the comments on or ideas and feedback on the padlet. And I I first of all, I think to to manage a school system as big as this, very complex. And everybody has their big nugget that they care about. And that they might be, but they're seeing it from a different viewpoint, vantage point than the people doing the work every day. They're seeing it from a different vantage point from district office, from the principal, from the teacher, from the parent, from the student, from the parent. And. Seeing the whole ecosystem and how it works together. And I think a lot of times, you know, and you know, mama bear and me is like, if I'm thinking it's about something with my son at a school. That's all I care about. That that's an issue, right? I need that to happen with him. But I think. I just want to give a kudos to the to the team. For your effort in trying to put together a plan that would encompass. A lot of the priorities that we're hearing from the public, but also from the data. And from your vantage points where you work and how how you see things. I know that those those surveys went out. Over a year ago, there was there was some participation in that. There was some, there was a meeting I went to. You know, hindsight is twenty twenty. Of course, there could be something better in a process. So we could look at. You know, some process improvements for the next strategic plan or how. The extent to which we engage people with this district this big, not everybody's going to be able to give their input on every single thing. But I think having a good representative sample of the people is is important. So. I just kind of wanted to say that because we can be very critical. I I'm using my my English teacher kind of lens on this. And date, you know, on the actual plan because I want it to be something. Just a couple tweaks so that everybody can better understand it. But in terms of the content. I think. This is for the public, strategic plans are not those detailed plans that that you might be looking for because I'm seeing some of those comments on here. I want more details. That's not what we would see at this level. We would see those big things that that Dr. Green was talking about. We would maybe the way the goals are written should maybe look. Look like more like strategies because I I I'll give you my notes. I'll just make a copy. This they're more like those high level strategies and then you might want to add a column somewhere saying. The types, not the specific, but the types of measures that you might use to say how that. Because I see implementation a lot as some of the things, we'll implement this, we'll implement that. That's the actual strategy. That's not the goal. That's the actual strategy. You want the kids to do this, right? So I think that that that's helpful. And then to the point. Of some of what I'm seeing here, you guys will be able to synthesize this. I know we have a big push on immersion and. And other, you know, other things going on. I think it is included in here. It's just not worded in such a way. That you might see it today because that's aligned with literacy, that's aligned with programming, that's aligned. All the programs that we do are in this. All all the programs that we do in this district are in the strategic plan. It's just not necessarily specifically written out.
And and again, I think for purposes of this, right, there there are multiple layers to this work. This was ultimately to get the board to engage in the priorities and the focus of where we're going to drive this district forward. But we get to start speaking about specific programs in a school or a specific program at a grade band. That was never the intent of this process, but what I will tell you this is when we look at our demographic data. And we know that a large segment in our our demographic are Latinos. The fact that we have to look at bilingualism. Right as a focus, just not for immersion program. Immersion is one way to get to bilingualism. But we need to focus on bilingualism as a whole. When we look at AI middle, when we look at Stanton, we look at Richie, when we look at Richardson Park. When we look at Marlbrook, when we look at Forest Oak. Are those schools that are are are. Majority. Or more than half, when we look at bilingualism. So what does that look like when we're integrating or interacting with? When we talk about community engagement, who are those community partners? You know, we partnered with organizations like Place and other books that to offer opportunities. When we look at, again, equity. If Marlbrook is offering some, I mean, if Lewis is offering something and what does that and all of that got flushed out of engagement. It may have been. Tension filled to some degree at some points. But as they say, if there's no pain, there's no gain. And that's how we look at this. So there's an opportunity again for us through the strategic process, but I think the other thing too, through all of these processes. Inputs, this whole, there there are some common trends that have already emerged itself that we have embedded in this program. I mean, in our in our recruiting, developing, retaining talent. That's across all levels, right? So that that's a high level thing that we know we want, that the idea of how we get there. Is what we as an operational staff or district team have to really figure out through resource allocation. How do we look at recruiting, developing and retaining that talent? Improving operations. Again, this was something that came from survey. Right? Looking at how reckless may benefit from further investment and maintaining optimal staff levels. We saw that dark COVID when we knew we had to. Get substitutes. And now that we actually did an effective job at doing that. Doctor Hammond is sitting there right now saying, how are we going to continue to afford that level? So that is something again, that's why we have that as a referendum. A a option when we look at. Secure an additional fund and then district leadership response and prior engagement. You know, this, you know, through that a a surveys, it said we should consider strategies to develop our school leaders. One of our focuses this year is leaders as coaches. What's the art and science of leadership? How do you actually authentically engage with your school communities beyond the program? How do you give them a listening ear? How do we ensure that if I'm a parent who has multiple children at multiple levels? That they're getting a similar level of customer service from school leaders and from our buildings? And what does that ultimately look like? Is there consistent communication that goes out? You know, again, these were COVID learned lessons too. One principal might send a newsletter out on a Sunday. We heard that feedback. Some parents are like by Sunday. I'm already checked out. Some said, actually, they like it on a Friday because that ends their week. So how do we actually engage parents to really figure out? What's the best modality of communication that they want? So those are some engagement things. Again, that we're talking about. And then when we looked at our strategic priorities. Student learning and outcomes, and this was through the 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 survey data was was chief among them. Really looking at teaching students communication skills. But some of the feedback that we got from teaching students problem solving skill. Teaching our students how to self manage. You know, so those were things again, that came from that feedback that we received that we're embedding. In our program, but more importantly, when you look at the objective that we determine. Student support. This was a high priority area based on responses, the mental health and wellbeing that Dr. Selison talked about. And then merging our work between multi tier, multi tier systems of support, not just being that behavioral. But also looking at academic. School climate was another one, engaging families, that community was another one. So everything you see here was from input. That we received and we're just trying to synthesize it and align it. So that we're not putting a hundred things in a plan and giving out a glossy document to the public. Then we ourselves aren't measuring and really determining what that growth is. So. That's what we have for you. Again, if you continue to have additional information, we ask that you, you know, you share it with us. Thank you to the members of the audience who put information in padlet as well as those who responded online. You know, all of that information along with the survey. Continue to go through an additional analysis. But again, the objectives and the priorities which you have before you, I think will put us on. A clear path moving forward so that. We don't have franchises of reckless schools operating under the reckless consolidated school, which are Gump Ralph. Where there's consistency across all of our school programs and processes so that people know when they see. That reckless consolidated school district, there's a standard of operation. That all of our schools go through and, you know, in full transparency. We're not there. That's that's the North Star, that's the ideal, that's the regardless of where you live, what's your. That's the North Star, that's the ideal, that's the, regardless of where you live, what zip codes you're in. We want all of our students' families and our educators to work in our schools to have that same level of experience, that experience, quality and care. And we talk about being passionate about the people we serve, right? Being consistent with how we show up and how we prioritize and network. So hopefully this provides a little clarity to the board. And again, we'll continue to engage and do the work that's necessary.
So the next steps, you're saying you want us to, for the next board meeting, to approve the high level or the whole thing?
Well, the whole thing won't be done, like we're not in action.
No, I'm talking about the whole thing in front of us.
Yes.
So that's what I have, that's what I have concerns about. Not, not the content, but the way which is presented, that's what I have.
And again, the motion was for the board to approve the priorities, the mission, vision, priorities.
And goals.
Objectives and goals. And if the goals are an issue, we need a wordsmith that we can pull the goals out and really just have the board approve the priorities and objectives.
And the values, because I think you're not, the values are really, are like the pillars. And I think that they're not highlighted as much as they could be.
I think the goals are critical though, because the goals help to define the objective. So I think pulling them out is a problem.
And I'm just, again, we will present what we presented to the board last month, bring it to the board and ask you to vote your comment.
So if the team, if the district team could take some, could just do a wordsmithing of the goals to look to see if there are any redundancies or double ideas within the goals, because that's what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about the content, I'm talking about the way in which it's presented.
We will take the additional feedback.
And then I can say, yeah. And if we could get that before next week.
Dr. Smith, we are working.
I know you are. The reason why I'm saying it is because we have an early board meeting this week.
We are well aware of that.
So. That's all.
And the team.
I already did it for you.
I appreciate all your input, that was great today.
It's a lot of nice.
Thank you very much for that. I think that's what I need in any.
If you would like to dig into the data sets.
Yes.
We have links in this presentation right here.
Yeah, you were sent all that too, right?
The presentation will be made up. I don't know if that was your question.
You good about it? Great.
Thank you so much for asking.
We got the padlet, we also got some online input as well that, again, is captured in our work.
Big.
It is big, yeah, but we're a big district.
I would like it to be a little more, I know you can't get it super narrow because you're serving a large population, lots of different needs. But just from a parent perspective, I would like to see it a little more, I don't know, narrowed down or, I don't know, in language that parents can understand.
Understandable. And again, I think from our perspective, this was really for the board. And with, the board has to do their business in public. And again, I think that's the transparency, but when you look at what families will receive, again, I think if you focus on the objectives so that the families who know, and then I think the other layer for families, and we shared this through the referendum meeting, not to conflict the two, but the question was, how do we know from an operation side what we're getting? So that that program standpoint actually comes from what's in the school. So when Mr. Pruitt was talking about making sure that we have a core of six, making sure that regardless of what high school you go to, you know, your child has the ability to take these anchor AP courses, right? And then in your case, as an advocate for immersion, right? Understanding that we are committed, we've said we are committed to immersion, but also for us focusing on this broader top, immersion is a program. We need to focus on bilingualism, right, and bilingualism. And when we look at that, that also provides other opportunities in terms of how we show up or how we engage our communities. So those are some of the layers that go underneath of it. That will be a part of the school's plans that will actually, as we talked about, making sure we're consistent, that principals will then have to engage families, irrespective of what school they are. And when they start to look at the creation of their continuous improvement plans, to make sure that that parent voice as a part of our strategic plan is represented so that you know, then you actually see kind of the devil less than the detail based on where your children are attending school. And again, another point that Mr. Pruitt mentioned about feeder patterns, knowing where your child is going to school next, ensure that there's some alignment across our large systems. Because we have a system right now, when we look at magnet, charter options and choice, there's a lot out there that lends itself to fragmentation and competition from within the district. And that's the ultimate goal of this plan. It's to synthesize that so that we have consistency across all of red clay schools. So thank you for putting your input in the padlet. And again, we have online information. We've done the surveys and much of what you see here is actually based on representative voice that we've received.
So part of, before we do that, part of a workshop, a board workshop is for the board to work. There's multiple ways we can engage, and I think there's a lot of talk about how we're not engaging the public. Not every meeting is for everybody to talk and do everything. So I appreciate this kind of hybrid kind of situation where we're getting the inputs from stakeholders on the padlet, in person, those things. But to fully understand the types of meetings that we have, they're not all the same. And I think I found that it was like, oh, I'm talking, but that's the purpose of the board workshop is for us to talk. But it came off as a presentation because, I don't know why, but it came up just as a presentation. But we didn't really talk about this as a collective in the workshop that we typically do. Maybe we don't have any comments, but that's kind of what the workshop model is for. Am I wrong about that?
Like workshop takes a different format.
Yeah, so that's what I was thinking we would do, I thought we would.
That we're talked, that we are given information, not that we, not that we then change it here.
So it's a presentation, not a workshop.
No, it's a workshop.
So my point is, my point is, you're darned if you do, you're darned if you don't, right? If you don't have, if you don't have the hybrid, you have people saying we're not being an engaging district. If you have the hybrid and somebody talks too much, then, or you said something, you're going to be criticized for what you said. Like when I said I'm a mama bear, I am a mama bear. People don't like that, that's fine, but somebody took that the wrong way and said I was self-calling all mom, people mama bears who do those types of things. So my point is, there's a, when we're thinking about this, we're the board. We set the direction of the district with these high-level goals, not the details that are, there's a lot of details in here. Again, great job, but a lot of this is not what we are approving. And so that, I mean, a lot of it is extra in here, and then there's more to be done. But parents, I'm just saying this out loud because parents want more, but they don't fully understand what the strategic plan is. This, like you said, you have the high-level plan, then you have your district-level plans, then you have your school-level plans, then you have your grade-level plans, then you have your classroom-level plans. It goes all the way down and they don't all have the same level of detail. And that was my feedback. So if it was misconstrued or misunderstood, I wasn't criticizing the work in here. I'm saying there's a lot in here and some of it is strategy and some of it is high-level. And so if we're going to do as a board, the work that we have to do, not you all, then I'd like to see that level for us to be able to approve at the board meeting.
Okay, and I was only, we were only answering the call to provide the board with more context. We had staff committing time to providing not only the board, but the community more context as to what went into what the board felt like they were unable to approve at the last meeting. So hopefully we've given you some context, we've given you some more detail. And again, there is more to come from a programming standpoint that goes to the community, but this isn't a programming meeting. This is really to kind of drive districts to give us that roadmap to carry the work forward.
And I think it's a good roadmap, I'm just going to put it out there. I think it's a very good roadmap and I think the objectives are important, I think the goals are important. I think the mission and the vision are all important and I think we need to approve all of them.
And I think we agree, Kathy, I think it's just the wording that I had some questions about.
I agree with you, I agree. This is Asia.
If there's nothing further.
I'm leaving with you.
Seven forty-two.
Thank you, everyone, have a great night.
Good night, y'all.
Thank you.